Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Wake County Board of Education. My name is Naomi Lambert and I am a League member. The League of Women Voters of Wake County is a nonpartisan organisation dedicated to empowering voters and defending democracy. We encourage informed and active participation in government, help citizens increase their understanding of major public policy issues, and work to influence public policy through education and advocacy. As a nonpartisan organisation, the League of Women Voters does not endorse or oppose candidates, and is proud to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. All candidates who filed to run for the Wake County Board of Education were invited to participate in our candidate forums. Outreach included emails, phone calls, as well as certified letters inviting candidates to respond and provide citizens with an opportunity to learn about their views. Thank you to the candidates who are with us today. The Wake County Board of Education is the local governing body of the Wake County Public School System. It is the largest school district in North Carolina and the 14th largest in the United States. It serves a very diverse student body and has improved its graduation rate so that almost 91% graduate from high school. Its nine members are currently elected from nine separate county districts. Each member represents that district within the entire board and is elected by residents of that district. This race is nonpartisan, meaning that candidates are not running as representatives of a political party, and their affiliation is not listed on the ballot. The school board sets policy with the school system implemented by the superintendent and administrative staff. The board also adopts an annual budget proposal that includes its request for local funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners, as well as its plan for using their allocated state and federal funds. The school board does not have taxing authority. Today, we welcome candidates for District Two: Monika Johnson-Hossler, Dorian Hamilton, and Monica Ruiz. District Two is the southeast corner of Wake County and encompasses parts of Fuquay Varina and Garner. All candidates live in District Two. Welcome, Monika, Dorian, and Monica. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Wake County Board of Education the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the board. Before we begin, I'd like to verify with the candidates that they have not received the questions in advance. Can you confirm that?
I have not received the questions in advance.
Yes, I can confirm that.
I can confirm I have not received any questions in advance.
Thank you so much. Right, you now have two minutes for an opening statement. Please include in your remarks why you chose to run for the school board and what makes you a good candidate for this position. Monika Johnson-Hossler, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Monika Johnson-Hossler. I'm a North Carolina native, born and raised in Thomasville, North Carolina, attended public schools K-12, as well as my master's and bachelor's degree from North Carolina Public School, UNC School, constituent schools. I am running for reelection for the Wake County School Board because I remain just as passionate and committed as I did in 2013 when I first entered into my first election. I'm a mother of a high school senior and the spouse of a high school math teacher in Wake County Public Schools. Our public schools are foundational and vital and important and personal to me. I believe that our public schools changed the trajectory of my life with my music teacher who was also my Girl Scout leader who told me as a young black girl of a single parent in Thomasville, North Carolina, that my education was the gateway to all the things that I wanted to be. I believe that my representation on this board and my passion and my lifelong advocacy as being a public servant, I will continue to protect and promote and be the best champion of public schools, and I will continue to be committed to creating a space where all teachers can teach and students can learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Monika. Monica Ruiz, you're next.
Hi, I'm Monica Ruiz. I'm running for District Two School Board, and I have a bachelor's in microbiology and a master's in secondary ed. And the reason why I'm running is because I'm a teacher in Wake County, and I see firsthand some of the major issues that I think need to be changed, particularly as it pertains to the curriculum. I see a lot of social activism, particularly in the EL curriculum. And I think based on our proficiency scores, really not meeting the needs of the students, we may have high graduation rates, but those proficiency rates are very low, particularly in for students of colour, minorities, and also students with disabilities. That's really concerning. Secondly, the financial mismanagement, I would say, of the board. There's a lot of departments that I don't know how necessary they are, and that money could be used more towards teachers, the classrooms, students, their learning. There's a lot of waste, I see. Lastly, school safety is very important. We need to fortify our schools. We need to make it a priority so that we are not seen on the major news networks as a statistic of one of these, you know, episodes of violence. So, thank you. I'm a teacher's voice for families in Wake County.
Thank you, Monica. And now, Dorian Hamilton, it's your turn.
Okay. Hi. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum and for the tremendous effort they put forth to educate the community. As you know, my name is Dorian Hamilton. I'm the mother of three girls. My oldest is a graduate of Wake Women's Leadership Academy, and she'll be graduating from college in December going to med school. I have two other girls, and they are in 10th and 11th grade and attend a Wake County High School. I was born on Long Island, New York, but Raleigh has been my home for 19 years. I've been a Realtor for 18. I founded Invictus Performing Arts School, where we use performing arts to teach discipline, build self-esteem, and support children. I'm also on the board of a nonprofit called Failures Not Adoption, where we redirect rehabilitate and refocus disenfranchised male youth. I also work at Wake County Public Schools. What originally started about four years ago as a monthly opportunity to observe my children's school from the inside has steadily evolved into me working as a long-term sub at several schools. The experience has allowed me to form a unique perspective on our students, teachers, and administrators, and observe insight on the actual day-to-day activities at several schools. While the Wake County School System is doing an admirable job educating many, I personally observe serious deficiencies that are leaving too many children undereducated and unprepared. As a business owner, I value teamwork, communication, results that solve problems, not theoretical solutions. Some issues that I'd like to address are our board's communications with parents in the community. I'd like to start treating our teachers like the highly educated professionals that they are, and I definitely want to work to significantly reduce a substantial achievement gap. We are educationally losing hundreds of youths every year. I look to earn your vote today as we discuss the matters that are in the forefront of our community, but I can't promise that I have every answer, but I can promise that I will definitely diligently work to find them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. Now, we're going to move to the question part of the forum, and you will each have two minutes to answer each question. First question, the teacher pipeline issue is in the news frequently. Fewer college students are choosing education as their major, and teachers are retiring or leaving the profession for better pay. Wake County is currently facing a staffing shortage and reported in late August that they still need 400 more teachers. What strategies do you think would help Wake County schools recruit and retain teachers? And Dorian, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you for that question. There are several strategies. I'm here as a sub because we have because of that lack of teachers. And I find, first of all, first thing we need to do is increase salaries. I know that we have increased the salaries recently, but it's not nearly enough. I was talking to a special education teacher yesterday, and he was speaking about how he has other family members that do the same exact job he does, but they get paid double the amount. Secondly, when I say we need to start treating teachers as the professionals they are, it seems that I think that they should get more training on specific things that we need that we're trying to address. We need to support them more. I advocate for like gift cards at the beginning of the year so that they are not coming out of their meager salary to buy things for the classroom. I also think to attract younger educators, we need to come up with better benefit packages, and basically it. So, money is the bottom line. Honestly, as a Realtor, a lot of teachers can't even afford at this point to live in the district that they teach in. So, the first thing we need to do is increase salaries. That's it.
Thank you, Dorian. Okay, Monica Ruiz, next. Thank you.
So, I think obviously pay, pay is an issue for teachers. But I also think there's other major issues that are concerning teachers. For one, the discipline. There's a lot of issues with discipline in the classroom. There's, and it's all kind of left up to the principal, but ultimately at each school, the way it functions now. However, there's no consistent, you know, county-wide policy. It's very vague and, like I said, left up to the principal. But overall, it seems like nothing really happens with the discipline. There's no real consequences. So, that's a major issue for teachers. Also, while we have, the classes are capped K through third, but you go beyond, and you know, you could have like 40 kids in a class. It's very overwhelming. So, I would say reducing class sizes as much as possible. Also, subs, I think, should be incentivized for taking on long-term sub positions. And I would advocate for that, increased pay really statewide, but at the very least county-wide. So, those are some of the major issues. Also with the IEPs and the MTSS, basically, there's so many restrictions on teachers and so many things that are time-consuming. I really think that those need to be tampered down so that teachers have more time teaching and less on the other issues in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And Monika, now it's your turn.
Thank you. So, certainly, we have seen the decline in high school students applying to schools of education for the last almost nearly eight years since I've been on the board. We are now seeing the repercussions of what that means for districts specifically like ours here in Wake County. That pipeline shortage is across the country, and one of the things I want to certainly lift up that Wake County has done is started our own future teacher program, because North Carolina as a state ended the incentives of incentivizing our students from our public schools to actually go to college in North Carolina with a commitment and incentivizing them to teach in our public schools. So, Wake County has restarted that program, and we've had a few cohorts that have been successful. And so I think part of that is really showing our own personal investments as a board, as a community, to the profession of teachers, which I believe that as a champion of public school, we can continue to share that with the public, that our teachers deserve to be treated as the professionals they are. I grew up in a time where teachers were valued, honoured, respected, and that no longer exists. People see teachers as a necessity and not necessarily valuing them that way. So morality and respect for a teacher is important to encourage young people to actually go into the field of education. Once they're there, how we recruit, retain, and train them is vitally important. We can't expect that four years or six, if they have a master's, gave them all the tools and strategies they need to be successful in classrooms. So I do believe that is important, that professional development is built into their profession so they can feel supported and have the strategies to meet the needs of today's students so that they have everything they need to provide training, education, and support to the next global citizenry. And the last piece of that, I do believe, is funding and pay, and Wake County has done a substantial deal to ensure our teachers here are funded, and I think it's going to be important that we see that pay increase statewide so that the supplement that our county provides is indeed useful for living in Wake County. And lastly, more adults in the building will be valuable to our educator. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monika. All right, now we're going to move on to the second question. Capital expenses are paid for with local property taxes. Building new schools must be carefully considered due to the high cost of land and construction materials. Throughout Wake County, we have some schools that are under-enrolled and others that are overcrowded. What are your suggestions for how to best balance the school population and fully utilize our existing infrastructure? And we're going to start with you, Monika.
So, in Wake County, our families have multiple choices when they decide what school their children will attend. And while all those choices are unique to Wake County, and most parents value that, it also puts a strain on our facilities in terms of under and over enrollment. So certainly, we are known nationally for the support and great work we've done in magnets, but I do believe the difficulty was when we create, when I, before I came on the board, we had created quite an interesting process of busing that it has taken us nearly 10 years to undo the busing, and now we have a busing shortage. And so initially, we were using our busing and our options to choose school to balance over and under enrollment by changing calendars for our overcrowded schools. And quite frankly, we need our community support to start to actually determine without bus drivers how we actually balance those. And so a large part of what we do during student assignment, which is upon us on the next few months, is bring in families to listen to what would help them choose schools that are closer to them. How do we get students in overcrowded areas? Because our county is not growing at the same rates across municipalities. So we know in Western Wake, they're building houses by the literal thousands, and the, our district up to northeast Wake County isn't growing at the same rate. And so while we don't have people living in nice little pods, we are committed to engaging the community to invest in diversifying across our county so that we're creating balanced and healthy schools across the district, and that will require community support. And so I hope as we release, parents and community members will feel compelled to come out to those student assignment hearings so that we can hear what we can be doing as a school district to implore and incentivize families to look at this, to look at our schools to create the best balance for all of those students. Thank you.
Thank you, Monika. Dorian, you're next.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I also agree that we should reintroduce choices for the parents. I don't necessarily like the term busing, but yeah, we were busing children, and it did help diversify the schools. And it also helped equal the enrollment in each, for each school. So, reaching out to the community, having public events, educating the parents on their choices is a good option to help, to help take care of the issue of uneven enrollment. Thank you.
Thanks, Dorian. And Monica, you're last.
Hi. So, as far as the infrastructure, I know Garner, for example, the community there, they're very, they feel very neglected because there's only two middle schools. And, and there's like a policy right now with magnet schools that you need to be from, it's like the people or the that are from a high-income area have priority as far as getting accepted into the magnet schools, and Garner is considered low-income, so they're not prioritized. So they have two old schools that are very overcrowded. So I think reevaluating the, how children or students are admitted into those magnet schools, I think would be a priority. Also, I think evaluating, well, the school assignments, obviously to grandfather those that are already at a particular school that want to stay at a particular school. But I don't, I don't like all the busing and, and everything that they do to try to make things, I guess, more balanced socio-economically. I don't like the idea of the children on the buses forever. So, I do think that that needs to be looked at. And I think also how much we're spending on, on the buildings themselves and how they're being built is important, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Our third question, school board members are elected in a district, but they govern the entire school system. In your view, what makes an effective school board member, and what do you think are their key responsibilities? And Monica, we're going to start with you.
So, I think, I think it's good to be a good listener, to listen to the priorities of the community that you serve, take into account not just my district, but the whole county. But ultimately, I think it's listening to your constituents and, and determining, you know, what will, what their needs are, what will benefit them the most, and ultimately, the students. So, I think, you know, just keeping them in mind as a main focus, but also bringing in parents into, into the picture. I think a lot of parents don't feel like they have much of a voice, and I'd like to give that back to them. I think we do need more transparency with the curriculum. We need to bring back textbooks. So, I think, I think bringing those things in so that it's apparent that we are meeting the needs of the community. Like I said, a lot of parents really want transparency. They want to see what their kids are learning in class, and it's, there's a little bit of a disconnect there. They're not allowed to see a lot of the curriculum. There's no textbooks. There's just workbooks, and that's a problem. So, again, I think it's just meeting the needs of your constituents and keeping students at the top of the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Monika, you're next.
Thank you. I certainly believe that it is important that you are accessible and actively engaged in your community prior to running for school board, because I think it, especially for those of us who have kids in our district, that certainly gives us an opening to what it looks like in our district. Oftentimes, people don't know what the school board's role is, and also by role, that also means people don't fully understand the limitations. And so I have a little rubric that I share with each family, and I share it before I join the board and continue to share with families what they're, what they can expect from a board member, and I think that's often missing, that people make promises that the board actually doesn't have the ability to fulfill. And so I think my integrity and honesty and transparency with families from the beginning so that they know what's dictated by the federal government, what do we get from the state government, and then what is actually the school board's role, in addition to what's the role of educators in our school system. And so that transparency is vitally important. I think being an active member of your community, being part of organizations prior to, because access points in Wake County first are our parents and our students and our families, but Wake County residents, 70% do not have children in our district, and it is underestimated that their involvement and engagement should absolutely and is essential to engagement. So including those organizations and community members who don't have children to invest in our schools and continue to be public champions is why companies flock to Wake County, because we are a community that is invested in our school. And I think one of the reasons that I continue to run for this seat this cycle is because I believe that I've lived up to the expectation that I don't always have the answers. And some, and when I can't give an answer that parents would like, I explain to them how we arrived at the place that we are, that doesn't meet the needs that they're asking for, and ask them to be continually engaged so that we can create opportunities for families to actually change policies at the state, federal, and local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Monika. Dorian, would you like to finish that question for us?
I previously stated the question because I froze, and I lost you guys, and then it came back.
Of course, of course. School board members are elected in a district, but they govern the entire school system. In your view, what makes an effective school board member, and what do you think are their key responsibilities?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think an effective school board member is a good listener, is a good, serves as an advocate between, like a bridge between the parents, the community, and the actual board. I think that they take the information and they bring it back to the community the best they can and explain the goals of the board or the state or whatever legislator, legislatures are making the decisions about their children. And then, and in return, they get feedback from the community and the parents and the schools, and bring that back to the appropriate legislature or people, and they help them make the decisions on what they're supposed to be. So, the main things that make a good school board member is a good listener, is also a good advocate. If we can't find the answers or the answers are not within our scope of power, then we direct the parent or the community member or whatever to the appropriate powers that can help them solve their problems. I also think that a good school board member should be passionate, because it takes a lot to deal with people from a very diverse area, not just my area, but there's other districts, and they have different priorities. And our, and our priorities may not be District Seven's priority, but we have to work together to come to a cohesive agreement that will serve the community on a whole and not just our district. Sometimes people get focused on their problem, and they don't understand that what, we can't do something because it's not advantageous for someone, for another district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. Right, our fourth question. North Carolina ranks 39th in the nation for per pupil expenditures and 38th in teacher pay. In Wake County, we depend a lot on local funds to supplement the state's budget. Do you think our current school budget is adequate for the needs of our school district? Explain why or why not. And we're going to start with you, Dorian.
Um, I'm unmuted. Okay. I do think that, I didn't actually, okay, I do not think that the current budget is sufficiently adequate, only because I think that we need a significant, significant increase in pay for our teachers. And, but I also think that just because we don't have all the money that we have now, that there aren't creative ways that we can that we can rearrange what we already have. I think I see other districts where they're introducing solar panels that's reducing, that would reduce the electrical costs and then the power costs for the schools. And also sell some of the energy and in some districts it's been able to increase the teacher pay by up to $15,000 per year, just on that one single change. So I think that we need to be more creative of what we already have. And if, and, and I think we also need to prioritize where the money goes. If something's ineffective, we need to eliminate it. And basically that's what it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Dorian. Okay, next it's Monica.
Thank you. So Wake County has done a phenomenal job, thanks to our county commissioner's commitment to our public school teachers. While our state certainly ranks in the lower third of teacher pay, our county does not. Wake County fortunately vacillates between the first and second or third this year, depending on incentives in teacher pay. And that is thankfully, again, to our community for their commitment to public school teachers. So while our state certainly has not risen to that, our county specifically has excelled in that way. I believe when people look at per pupil, it's important to understand that the school district has not matched inflation. And so we have people talking about roughly $9,000 per student and we're not doing an excellent job. And the truth is, we've not matched where we were pre the recession in the early 2000s. And so while I do believe that we do an excellent job meeting the needs based on what we have, I also know that our students need and deserve more. And part of that per pupil spending, we look to things that we aren't able to do. Like people ask us, why don't all students take a foreign language, which we know is invaluable in the work, global workforce. When we talk about access to music, art and band, when the state cuts those things, the county has to supplement that so that our students aren't losing the valuable extracurricular that enhances their educational opportunities. And so I do believe that it is absolutely our, my responsibility as a public servant and a champion of public schools to continue to speak to the importance and the direct correlation to per pupil spending, to student outcomes and the importance of that. And so I will continue to advocate for that while also making sure that we are creative and seeing the value of putting money directly that benefits our students. And that includes the things that I mentioned, but it also includes the supportive nature in a school building such as counselors, social workers and other adults in the building who can feed into, important to that student so that we're meeting not just their academic, but their social and emotional needs.
Thank you, Monika. Monica, would you like to finish up that question for us?
Yes. So when I'm elected, I plan to go through the budget with like a fine tooth comb and figure out how we're spending our money. Where is all that money going? I know there's a lot of departments that probably don't even need to exist. So that would be a priority for me. As far as the pure per pupil spending, I think when you compare it to like private schools, it's actually higher than a lot of private schools. Granted, they don't have as much of the infrastructure to have to consider. But you know, they're, they're able to fund the, the student's education with less. So I don't know that necessarily it's, you know, you can always have more money, more money, more money, but how it's being spent is important. Also, I, I learned, and I didn't know this, that every teacher is supposed to get $300 per classroom. Now I think a lot of principals probably just, you know, they, they pull the money and kind of use it for the whole school. But honestly, that should be given directly to the teachers for the classroom. So I, again, I think it's just a mismanagement of the money that is a problem. And I, I really want to get it more into the, the classrooms with the teachers and the students. That needs to be a priority, not these other little pet projects. So, thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, well, we are now on our last question, the fifth question. School safety and security is a complex topic with various organizations and interest groups tackling the issue from different angles. But clearly everyone is concerned about school safety. What is being done well by Wa- Wake County schools? And what would you suggest is needed to improve school safety? And Monica, we're going to start with you.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad that they at least keep the front of the doors locked. But, so that's good. However, there's a lot of issues as far as how they, who they let into the building. I guess, you know, it's like usually you just kind of stand there and they, they look at you, I guess, and they're like, okay, they look good enough to come in. There's nobody really surveying people. And, and it's different at each school you go to. Some of them, like when I've subbed, for example, I go in and you use, you show them your ID. Some of them you just sign. So I think having standardized procedures, also a system for those schools that have portables. Sometimes they're unlocked. And in between classes and things, there could, there's a security risk there. I definitely think we need SROs in every school, including the elementaries. I think they've been neglected. And I, I've also, I also would like to see vestibles for as a means of seeing if, if people are carrying any sort of metal weaponry as they enter the school. We know that not just strangers, but sometimes students, maybe even staff could be a, a threat. So I think we have to prioritize it. So, and a thorough background check on all volunteers, staff, and I think honestly annually, that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Dorian, you're next.
Okay, thank you again. I do realize that there are certain security concerns and it varies between schools. Many schools think does what's appropriate, they feel is appropriate for their particular situation in their different schools. What I don't want to do is definitely over police our, our stu-, our kids. I don't want to turn our schools into a police state where we have metal detectors and we have canine dogs walking through the schools. And there's so many police there that certain, certain students are already targeted and we don't need more of that in the schools. I believe that based on the occurrences of incidents, we should have, we should have SRO officers and it should be based on safety of the school basis, I guess, based on the previous year. I also think that there should be some type of teacher training. We already have cameras. I think someone should be monitoring the cameras. And I also think that as far as schools, you're, when you're talking about outside problems coming in, then I think there should be a standard across the board where all the doors are locked from the outside and the students can get, you know, out if they need to. But when you're talking about safety within schools, then I think there should be some type of teacher training. I think there should be an officer that roams the, the halls on a regular basis that people know. And, and that's where we should go as far as safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. And Monica, could you give us your view?
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate you noting that safety is a complex topic. Safety is both physical safety, but also mental and sa- mental wellbeing safety. And so I will start with physical safety since that's mostly what people think of first. Wake County Public Schools recently had a safety audit by a team that has actually done this across the nation. And we asked for that safety audit, like everyone else, wanting to make sure that our students and educators in those buildings were safe and creating the best environment for everyone. And fortunately, we found quite a few things that we were doing well. We are building all of our new schools with vestibles because we do believe the importance of giving people a space to enter the building there. We have cost allocations to what it would cost to build it to older schools until all of those schools roll into renovations. As many people know, we have a seven-year rolling plan and every capital campaign includes rebuilding schools with that built into the building plan. And so when people talk about the cost of our buildings, we are building into the infrastructure, the safety mechanisms and tools. We recently purchased Lobby Guard, which is the actual tool that, that requires everyone entering the building. All of our schools did not have it because of cost. We built that in. So now every school will have it. So when you sign in, your name goes into a system that goes to the district and you get a name badge, which allows us to one, clarify who's in the building and two, know if they're supposed to be in that building. We successfully have a great background check for everyone who enters our buildings and it is done each year. Parents know that when their kids go to school, they have to reinvest in becoming a system or specific school volunteer. I think we've also done a good job of ensuring our partnership with our municipalities. Like everyone, their challenges and changes, and I think we've done a great job of building out our memorandum of understanding with those municipalities and their investment alongside Wake County in our school resource officers as a benefit. And then I think the emotional health and wellbeing, we're slowly getting ourselves to ensure that we have helping professionals in the building to address student mental health as a part of safety as well.
Thank you, Monica. Well, thank you to all you candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving in elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as members of the Wake County Board of Education. You now have two minutes each to make closing statements and we're going to start with Monica.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum, but also for always recognizing women leaders in our county and across the country and your participation in the election of school boards. Many people have never paid attention to the back and bottom of the ballot where I would say it is oftentimes the least talked about position, but the most impactful. We touch student and family lives daily. So thank you for your support and acknowledgement. And I believe that that's what's important is recognizing that most people in our community don't know that our school board is elected. So this opportunity allows people to know that this is a position that our community has the right to vote for and to decide who's the best candidate. And there are multiple candidates who can meet multiple needs. But I implore the community to note the work that I've been committed to, that I've maintained my original stance in 2013, that I will ask the questions of our communities, actively listen and then move those things forward and explain to families when, whose role it is when it's the school systems, we take those things into consideration. Student voice, choice, family engagement, community participation are essential to our public schools and I will continue to be a champion for our public schools alongside all of our stakeholders, including our business partners who continue to pour and invest in our communities, much like the League of Women Voters. It is important that our community continues to invest in public education and continue to highlight the importance of our students' social, emotional wellbeing alongside their academic achievement. Our students and our communities excel when we are creating and investing in our public schools as both an academic institution, but also an economic driver. We are one of the highest, we have the highest number of employees in our county. And that's important to note that we are a part of our economic system. And so investing in teacher pay, our support staff pay is important. And those are the things that are on the ballot is how we protect and build a community that we all can be proud of. And I do believe that that is my commitment as a school board member and will continue to be that as a community member, as a parent and the spouse of a edu-, of a lifelong educator. And I will continue to be a lifelong learner inside our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Monica, you're next.
I would just like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to have this forum. And I also appreciate Dorian and Monica for accommodating my request to have this, this time for the forum during the week. So I really appreciate that. Now, as far as when I'm elected, I plan to implement a lot of changes, particularly as it pertains to the curriculum. I really want to bring back textbooks. I know that there is textbook funding. And so those need to come back. Curriculum transparency for parents and students. And then financial accountability. I, I want to, like I said, go through the budget with a fine tooth comb and figure out how the money is being spent. Where it could be spent in, in a better place. And, and then school safety is a priority. And, and the mental health of our students too, which does fall under school safety. It is a priority. So I think making sure that counselors actually can spend more time counseling students versus other projects. And I want to be that voice for families, a teacher's voice for families in Wake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And Dorian, would you like to make your comments now?
Okay, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My experience and observations have compelled me to become a liaison and advocate for parents and children. If elected, I will work to form clear communication avenues, connect parents, the community and the board. I will work to ensure that new programs are properly vetted and result, are properly vetted and results driven. We need to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to our children's education. And make sure our children are in a nurturing environment so they can become a productive adult. We need to make sure that every single child that attends Wake County Schools has a solid education. Right now, today, there are dozens of children that are being unmotivated and undereducated. When I look into the faces of these particular children, it intrinsically moves me to do everything I can to work for change. I exhort your vote to help me with this mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. So as we end our forum, we would like to encourage you to visit our website, vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and to find out the latest information on early voting as well as polling place, hours and locations. Please make your own plan to vote and encourage others to vote in the upcoming election. Thank you again for joining us.